Yes, alright, I can't see it.
Yeah, it was Tuesday or Monday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, I didn't come to that. So, what day was Thursday?
Um, I'll do with mine.
Today's the 20th.
Today's the 20th, Thursday was the 16th.
Tuesday was, uh, 14th.
We met on the second, no, the 1st.
Oh, Lord.
No, I just didn't do, I was not getting through to you.
On the 13th, no, 14th, right?
No, yeah, no, yeah, I met on Thursday.
I mentioned 13th.
13th, and then the 14th.
You gotta figure out, yeah, the question is to my. It's 7 o'clock. Is everyone ready? Good evening, welcome to, uh, the Monday, November 20th meeting of the Albion City Council. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, I'd ask you to place it on silent. Uh, I can call in this meeting to order, and we will begin with a moment of silence. Uh, thank you, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk to me, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Barnes, Reed, Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. Uh, there any, uh, councilmember comments this evening? Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna say, um, thank you to, um, Luanne Summers and Dick Rukowski for inviting, um, myself and the city manager to have, um, a small Thanksgiving potluck with our seniors. It's always fun to be around seniors, and you kinda get to talk to 'em and see what's on their minds, and, um, try to join in and, and help out. So, uh, thank you for inviting us today.
Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to publicly thank, uh, the many and varied construction workers who've worked on our project, uh, in the downtown these last six months. I also wanna thank our city manager for helping me, uh, say thank you by having pizza dinner, uh, or pizza lunch for the crew that was still there. Uh, you might have seen, if you're walking through downtown, that they planted trees today. Um, and so, as they finish up their work for the season, um, it's great that we're gonna get our downtown back. Um, second thing I wanna say is that, uh, the Luddington Center will be open for parade viewing, uh, during the, uh, Albion Glow Parade. So, um, so people are welcome to come in and get warm. If it's a cold, blustery day, come up to the second floor, to that corner office space. We have a great view of that intersection where the parade will be coming around the corner onto Superior Street. Uh, there might be some candy there for folks to enjoy while there. Um, so, the building is open until, uh, I believe, nine o'clock? Maybe 10 o'clock at night? So, uh, if you wanna come and enjoy the parade, it won't be as loud, uh, but it might be warmer. So, thank you.
Are there any other, uh, council comments this evening? Uh, just a reminder, um, there are still a number of, uh, city board and commission, commission, uh, seats that are open. If you're interested, please, uh, contact the manager or the clerk, uh, for an application. It's also online. Um, a number of seats will open up towards the end of the year. Uh, and, yeah, that's my main announcement. Uh, we will move on to the public hearing. Uh, this is regarding, uh, item A, to approve, uh, Resolution 2017-46, Future Land Use and Zoning Plan Edits. Uh, if there are any, if there's any public comment this evening on, um, the zoning plan, please come forward and state your name and address. Are there any, uh, public comments, uh, on this public hearing on the, uh, future land use and zoning plan? Okay. Seeing none, uh, I will close public discussion, and, uh, we'll ask the manager to, just to provide some further clarification.
Okay. Um, this has been before you, I think, at each meeting, and in a nutshell, it is essentially an overview and vision of how the city would like to approach redevelopment and zoning going forward. Oh, it's identi, it's consolidating the, um, zoning districts, and we have asked for, um, input from citizens, as well as our various boards and commissions, including the DDA. They will vote before the planning commission tomorrow if there are any edits, and they will take action, and then it will come back. They will have a public hearing, it'll come back for your final adoption on December the 4th.
Uh, yes.
And Danielle Nelson is here, if you wanted any additional details.
Do you have any questions? Just let me know.
Okay, okay. Are there any, uh, questions from council this evening? Okay, seeing none, thank you. We will, uh, proceed. Is there a, a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Uh, any discussion? Nope. Uh, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Public comments. Uh, persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum, uh, and this is regarding agenda items only. Please come forward and state your name and, uh, address. Are there any, uh, public comment, public comments this evening regarding the agenda? Okay. Seeing no public comment, uh, we will proceed to, uh, the consent calendar. Uh, basically, the approval of various, uh, meetings, and also the 2018 meeting scheduled for, uh, council, and then just the, uh, assembly permit for the, for the Albion Glow, uh, activities and festivities. Uh, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
Okay. Moved and seconded, uh, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Okay. Items for individual discussion. Item A, request approval, the reappointment, um, to boards of commissions of Mike Timque, uh, for the DDA board, uh, term to expire in December, December 20, excuse me, 31st, 2021.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, um, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item B, discussion update on Dalrymple, uh, former Dalrymple school site.
Uh, Mayor and council, this was requested, requested by councilmember Brown, and essentially, as you know, it has been demolished by, um, partnership with the Calhoun County Treasurer and Land Bank, and, um, they're in the process of also getting the, um, Phase 1 environmental, um, done as part of the grant that they received recently, if you recall, to do some of that type of work. So, they're gonna include that in that larger project. So, we anticipate that they will be deeding it over to the city through an arrangement in the near future, probably within the next 60 days or so.
Councilmember French.
Um, can you tell me how much we're going to pay for that property? It's held by the land bank, correct, or the treasurer's office? So, we will have to, presumably, there will be some fee that we'll have to pay to take the property?
I sincerely hope not. Um, those, our initial conversation was that we could assume the, uh, maintenance of the property.
I see. Okay, so in exchange for maintenance, we're gonna get it for nothing? Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, councilmember Spicer and councilmember Brown.
Thank you. So, I, I'm assuming, because there is a process, and that includes a certain timeframe, I guess, undetermined at this time, but is there any idea on plans for the property, um, that anyone is discussing? Have you heard, do you know of anything, or?
Oh, councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, first of all, thank you, Dr. Mitchell, for the update. Um, I reached out to, um, well, Dr. Mitchell and I have kinda bounced some, some thoughts, um, back and forth, but what, because Dalrymple's in Precinct 3, I just, I, I want to, um, be given the opportunity to host a couple meetings, and, um, you know, talk to residents in my precinct, just to see, uh, initially, what people in Precinct 3 would like to see on that property. Um, just to get, you know, input from residents, um, but just in really early stages, to just kinda see what people in that neighborhood want to, to see there, but no plans. Um, I mean, that's something council would have to discuss and come up with anyway, but.
Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in response to councilwoman Brown's comments, uh, built Albion America Vista Team last year, before demolition, uh, headed up by Devin Parker, uh, did a whole ser, did a couple of town hall meetings, and then went door to door in the neighborhood. So, we'll make sure, I'll try to make sure to get you the results of that report, so you have some places to start those conversations.
Okay, councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So, councilmember French, thank you for that. I actually attended, um.
Oh, you did? Okay, great.
The meeting. So, I thank you. Thank you for that, um, and I, I'd be happy to, to get that information.
Great, yeah.
Uh, is there any further discussion? Okay. We'll move on to item C, request approval memorandum of understanding for 99 South Monroe Street. Is there, uh, a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
Uh, moved and seconded, uh, Dr. Mitchell.
Mayor and council, this is the, um, abandoned and unused property located at 99 South Monroe. It's actually owned by M.DOT slash Amtrak. Um, so, they have agreed to have the building demolished, but in order to expedite the process, the, um, college has, Albion College has also agreed to be the demolition contractor, and to get the bids, as well as to handle the demolition of the property. And they'll be reimbursed by M.DOT. The college, however, does not have a relationship with M.DOT, so the city does. So, they asked for the city to be the fiduciary. So, we'll be essentially turning in the invoices from the college for reimbursement, and passing them through back to the college. So, there's no cost associated with the city at all in this, um, arrangement.
Okay. Any, uh, discussion from council on this? Okay. Uh, seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Uh, D, uh, I guess it's discussion or approval, uh, potential budget considerations? Oh, I thought, I thought he was coming.
And Mayor and council, and forgive me, I think I'm starting to catch a cold and I'm starting to lose my voice. Um, if you recall at your last meeting, we had a presentation in regards to some of the demands we have relative to, um, establishing additional staff in particular to support our operations, and those included, um, for code enforcement, and we were looking at, this administration was suggesting two part-time employees, um, for a total cost of $55,000. Um, there were some other items, sort of, which are included in your packet for the planning commission, for the redevelopment-ready community, 4,000, which is the, um, local match required for the zoning consultant, um, towards the M.DOT grant. Um, a deputy treasurer clerk, that would be a full-time position at a cost of $65,000. Uh, one of the concerns there, that includes benefit package. One of the concerns there is that we have a clerk, and we have a finance director, and whenever they're absent, the operations essentially cease in those offices relative to the person that's at top. So, we don't have a backup at all for either of them, and with many elections coming up next year, uh, we really do need to, um, take a, a very strong look at how we can, um, spread the, um, responsibilities of the office, and have a succession plan and backup plan for those operations and their absences. Let's see, um, the Albion Marshall Connector, there was a meeting of a group of stakeholders, and, um, they estimated that the gap for the next three years is $30,000 for year 1 and 2, and $35,000 for year 3, um, to keep it operational. And we're looking at three years, because, um, in that timeframe, we're anticipating that the county's plan to have a, a county-wide transportation system, hopefully, will be in place or on the way to be established. So, we were looking for sustainable funding, so that they aren't coming e, each year with, um, the last-minute requirement for funding from the city. We were able to identify, um, 10 partners, nine partners, to participate in that, including, um, the, um, the senior millage and other organizations. Our community foundations are receptive to us submitting a grant for that funding, so by spreading it among 10 organizations, instead of one having to do a much larger, um, contribution, each are hopefully agreeing to do the 3,000. So, this is, um, the 3,000 from the city of Albion. Um, this is city manager's office, um, a request for a part-time clerical to support the operations of that office. Um, many of you may have noticed that I'm in a lot of meetings, as well as Stacy, because we work on a lot of programs and projects that just take us out of the office. So, to have someone there to cover the phones and to receive people who are coming in on a regular schedule will be most helpful to our overall operations. And, as I had mentioned previously, for the department heads, there isn't a mechanism in place currently for them to receive essentially what we would call step increases. They receive the general salary increases that all employees get, but they don't get any increase in their base. So, that request is for them to receive a 2% increase in their base salary, and that, um, for all of them would be approximately $9,500. There were some other items in regards to MML training. I don't have a total cost for that. I did get the, um, proposal from attorney Scott Smith today, and that's for $1,500. Um, I also spoke with the director of MML. I'm not certain of any costs associated with, um, having an arrangement for conversations or, um, engagement with them or other elected officials. So, I didn't know what dollar amount you may want to include in that. There was some mention of additional training, um, through that or other organizations. Um, the Dalrymple, we don't have any numbers yet, but just to keep on your radar that there will be some, uh, upcoming expenses associated with the maintenance of that property. Um, Rieger Park, as councilmember Spicer had pointed out, um, if there is a desire to fix that spring there, um, it's, the estimate we had received was just under 17, so rounding up to $17,000. And the Recreation Center, uh, we have the Cronin Foundation, that would essentially be a wash, um, that's for the rent of the facilities. We did receive, we will be receiving the Cronin Foundation grant, um, to pay for the overhead for the use of that facility by recreation. But I just wanted to let you know that that will need to be an adjustment to the budget. Um, the charter revision, I don't know what you are, might be proposing relative to that and the cost, but I did want to list that. And also, the MERS in regards to closed, um, defined benefit retirement plans, and, um, finance director Tom Mead is here. I don't know if you wanna speak to that very briefly?
Tom Mead, finance director, and thank you. Uh, this, I think we talked about it real brief. We touched on it a little bit when we were going through some of the budget information, but, um, the city in the past has had a defined benefit plan, which is now closed. No new employees are, uh, going into that, and it has been closed for a number of years. Uh, however, there still are, uh, n, number of retirees drawing on the plan, as well as a few of the, uh, senior employees that are, have been with the city a long time that are still in the plan. What has happened, because that's a closed system, as you can imagine, no new employees are coming in, so no new contributions are being made to the plan, whereas, payments are going out to the retirees. So, the asset of that plan is shrinking. And the problem with that, other than the obvious, I mean, uh, is, is the earnings from your investment on those assets far exceed what we can put into the plan as far as trying to cover future benefit payments. So, as that asset shrinks, and not only you're losing your potential, what you can pay, but you're also losing your investment potential, as what you can earn for additional income in the future. And MERS has recognized that this is becoming a problem, so they're starting to charge us a, a fair amount of money. And to give you an idea, for the 2018 budget, we have, based on what MERS has already told us to date, we have put in the budget $91,000 that we will be paying into this plan. Um, and I think we talked about, one of the plans, they're breaking down by divisions. One of the divisions is the nurses' division, from when we started the hospital. Uh, to give you an idea of how that division, that the, because MERS is recognizing how quickly that, those assets are depleting, they bumped theirs up from $493 a month to $907 a month. So, that division alone went up 184%. If our other divisions start going up, uh, similar to that, you know, take $91,000 and, you know, multiply it by 184%, we could be paying, you know, $200,000 into that. So, one thought we had is the possibilities may be looking at a bond. If we're gonna pay $91,000 to MERS, it may make more sense. We'll have to get the numbers, of course, so I'll have to run actuaries, we'll have to talk to bonding companies and get information, but it may make more sense to put that $91,000 towards a bond payment each year, or some equivalent amount. Have the money upfront from the bond that we can invest into the MERS plan, and earn, hopefully, as, as MERS has been averaging 8% to 10% annually, which will put more income into this plan by far than what we're able to. So, you know, we may, that $91,000 may more than be covered by the earnings from the bond that is invested. And our costs for the bond generally are pretty low. Generally, municipalities are getting bonds for, you know, 2%, 3%, whatever, so.
What would, what would the, excuse me, sorry. What would the, the, the term be for the bond?
I'd have no idea, to be honest with you. We'd have to talk with some bonding companies and see what they'd be willing to do.
Okay.
And I think, um, Dr. Mitchell had mentioned, we just found out not long ago, uh, that, I believe it was the county, or, uh, Calhoun County is looking at doing something similar. So, hopefully, we can maybe get with them and find out who they're talking to, what information they've already gained from their discussions, and, uh, by doing some investigating on our own, uh, come back to you guys with some numbers on that. But, we just, we definitely wanna give you a heads up, though, that this, you know, something that, as that asset value depletes, and you still have retirees and potential retirees that are gonna be drawing on it, it could become a huge expense for the city if we don't try to address it sooner as opposed to later, so.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council? Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
So, um, relative to.
One question.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. Just, Tom, real quick, so, where, for the 2018 MERS budget, we've allotted, allotted $91,000, so are we, we're gonna be expected to do something by the 2019 budget? Is, is that your?
I'm sure they will. I'm sure MERS will. In fact, we've been paying into it the last couple of years, but it just keeps going up, um, pretty, pretty drastic. Um, in past years, several years back, the city didn't put anything into it, and eventually, 'cause we were overfunded, it was, we were in a good position, but as those assets have depleted, we're now actually, for the first time, uh, in 2000, I'm getting my ears right, 2016, actuarial came back for, where for the first time in several years, we're actually underfunded a little bit. Now, we're like at 99% or 98% or something, so. So, yes, we, I'm sure we'll have to pay in for many years to come until.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. So, the manager provided us with the, the fund balance sheet.
Yes.
Um, and would, so I guess the, I guess the hard, the question is, would the request be to pull, for these various, um, potential, um, budget items, just to pull them from fund balance?
Yes, um, primarily from the general fund. The, um, code enforcement would be approximately a 50/50 split between, um, general fund and the solid waste fund, which is also provided in the sheet that I gave you.
Okay. And if, if council was interested in, in, in doing, uh, doing a number of these things, uh, time, I guess, timing-wise, when would we need to, to indicate that?
Well, preferably today, at, at least if we could get an indication of, um, if there is some consensus on doing some of these, so that we can have it at the, um, your next meeting, which, where you will be discussing the budget, which will be next Monday, the 27th.
Okay. Um, are there any, uh, any discussion from council, or any, um, so?
Are you?
Oh, yes, okay. Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. For the, um, code enforcement, um, administration part of the support, um, it's to my knowledge, and just help me out if you can, Dr. Mitchell, that a lot of, like, the, um, the permits and, um, passes and, um, numerous of things go through the front office, is what I'm being told. I don't know if it's true or not, but. A lot of their, their permits and things like that go through the front office, so I'm not quite sure, um, if we can have, like, a little bit more discussion on, uh, the medis, administration support of the code enforcement, because they're telling me that a lot of the administration part comes through the front, the front desk, downstairs.
Would you allow me to?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, primarily, they're handling the payment, um, for those permits at the front office. There's still administrative work that John Tracy has to do himself, including preparing the documents for posting, preparing citations, um, just all of the process. If you saw the documents that he provided in the packet at your last meeting, um, he has to do all of that paperwork himself. So, if he's doing his own administrative background work, that means he's not out in the field, or he's not working on planning and zoning and other activities. So, to have that staff support is really kind of critical for him to be more effective in his role.
Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. So, with regarding the personnel, we're looking at two full-time and two part-time positions being added to our staff?
Three part-time and one full-time. Two for code enforcement.
Oh, that's right. You're right.
Two part, so two.
A part-time for.
One full-time, a part-time, two part-time in code enforcement and a part-time in city manager?
Correct.
Okay, so one and three, okay.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. Um, I asked, um, Mr. Tracy about the funds that we collect for, um, code violations and, um, citations. If, um, we had a, a total as to what that is annually, um, when we had our last budget meeting, and I believe he didn't have that readily available? Is that available now, or could it be?
It's actually in the budget documents that you received. It would be under the general fund.
The total amount that we collect?
Yes, it would, yeah, it would reflect the 2017 budget, as well as actual to-date and projections, and then what we're projecting for 2018.
'Cause he didn't, okay, thank you.
And I, I can meet with you, um, at another time and show you exactly where it's located.
Thank you.
So, if, there're further, uh, discussions? I mean, I guess, the, the manager and, uh, councilmember Lawler and I were at the meeting discussing the connector. So, I think it's awesome that the service can continue without us fully having to subsidize it, so I, I. having to subsidize it, so I think that should be an easy, you know, inclusion. The, these are suggestions, and I'm making these to council. The planning commission, that, that's, that's gonna be facilitated by Michigan State?
No, the South, it was Southwest Planning Council.
Okay. And so without that, it would have been much more expensive?
Yes.
So that makes sense. I think I'm gonna, just gonna skip, just jump to the code enforcement thing real quick. So the fifty-five is the total for...
Two part-time.
For two part-time, okay. And to me, that makes sense, you know, we regularly have residents reach out to us about code enforcement issues. The, can, can you go into a little detail about the deputy clerk, or like what that, how that function would work, or the, the need?
Well, and I don't know if Clerk Jill Domingo wants to offer, but quite frankly, should she be sick, we don't have a backup plan.
Okay.
And it's quite similar with Tommy, the finance director.
Okay. Okay, so that's, that's actually a good point there, so basically, this would be a dual, you know, it's not just...
Correct.
Okay. And that sixty-five includes salary and benefits?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, let's see. The clerk, so like the part, like, would that just be, if it's part-time, how, would it just be certain days, or what's the...
Yes, and probably Monday through Thursday, general Fridays aren't that busy.
Okay. Okay. Uh, I'm just going down really quickly to the whole list. So the MML, that, that's, would that include, well, if we do the thing this year, that's in this year's budget, but that would include basically, let's say we replicate what we did last year at the beginning of the year, can you remember how much that was?
Just over two thousand, like twenty-two hundred.
Okay. Um, let's see. The, I'll, I'll jump and say the charter revision, but I talked to Mr. Letzman, Peter Letzman, I asked him a question about, you know, how they usually fund that, and he said usually because it's like a two-year process, they'll split it, so it really wouldn't need to even be in this budget, because, you know, you, we could, you could plan it for the next budget, because it would be after the election, if, if the council even went that way, so that can be off the table. So do we need to vote, or you just need kind of a consensus of, are there...
If I could offer one additional piece of information that might be critical to your consideration, on the fund balance, position of the fund balance sheet that was handed out to you, you had adopted a policy that required you to have a twenty percent fund balance. So what we have presently, just looking at the general fund, is a projection of almost thirty-five percent. So twenty percent for general fund is approximately seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. So even if you rounded up being quite conservative to one million, there is some flexibility. I would not recommend spending it down entirely, but there is some funding available for some of these initiatives. And also want to remind you, relative to the code enforcement, we are anticipating with certain programs in place that there will be some cost recovery and generating of revenues relative to covering those costs for the positions. And it is the expectation of the union, in fact, that they be part-time for no more than ten months, but we would hope to transition at least one of them to a full-time position.
Is there any further discussion from council? Like I said, I, I, when it, when it comes to fund balance, I'm always, you know, hesitant, because I know that definitely in the past couple of years, it's, it's grown a lot, and then, you know, you do have to, we do have to make investments in, you know, into operations to kind of grow and produce, so I understand that. If these were, I guess, when's our next meeting?
Monday.
Monday, okay. Could this be reflected in the budget by Monday? Or is that, is that a question for...
Just so I understand, so this coming Monday, you're talking about when we have a study session, correct?
Yes, or a special meeting.
It's a special meeting now, okay. Yes, I, I'll go out on a limb and say, I think we can put this into the budget by Monday.
Okay.
It's a short week, but I think we can get it in there.
Okay. So the, so then the, what I heard you discussing earlier regarding basically our retiree costs is, is that, I don't know, last budget and this budget, we paid a little bit, you know, it was like thirty-something, like thirty-five or something?
Current year?
Yeah.
It's more than that, it was probably, I'm going off memory, but I'd say closer to seventy thousand in seventeen.
Okay.
And it will go, based on what MERS has already informed us, it'll go to the ninety-one. So we did build that into the eighteen budget already, so that number's already in there.
So basically, with the plan, with the, the plan is to kind of solve that long-term problem, is through the bonds, so we don't have to keep going to fund balance to contribute to that, so...
That's a hope. I mean, we just started that discussion, maybe looking at bonds, but we're hoping that something like that, that we can find a solution.
Okay.
Because otherwise, I think that number that we're gonna get billed for is just gonna keep growing and growing and growing, which of course takes money away from other things you'd like to do with that money, you know, in your operations.
Okay.
And, oh, one item that I neglected to mention, we just received word today that we are recipient of the COPS grant that we requested for community policing, and I want to thank Chief Scott Kip, as well as Deputy Chief Jason Kern, for the application that they put together with the support from Deputy Director Stacy Levin. And especially, I want to thank County Commissioner Tompkins, because he definitely was helping to facilitate conversations and urging the consideration in DC because of the relationships he had there, so that's, I believe it was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant over three, three years, and it's to fund one community policing position. Their local match is seventy thousand five hundred and something, so for the first year, there would need to be a budget adjustment of twenty-two thousand.
Okay. Additional?
Yes.
For us, for...
That would be, and I guess it would be split, Tom, because if they could hire this year, some of it, the twenty-two would be this year, and the rest would go to the two thousand and eighteen budget?
I'm not sure how they would bill us, or how that would work, maybe Chief Kip would have a, I glanced at the email, I noticed they said seventy-seven thousand over three years, so I don't know if that's gonna be monthly or annual, I'm not sure how they'd bill it.
We don't have the details yet, but I do want to bring that to your attention.
Okay. Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. So if we're looking at spending fund balance, I'm, I'm a fan of spending fund balance for a single use, single opportunities, and not for funding long-term. So, because that's clearly not sustainable. So my concern about the MERS is that we're gonna take out bonds that we're never gonna have to repay, or we're hoping that we're gonna take out bonds that will represent investment in our city by someone who will buy those bonds. So I guess I'm not understanding how bonds are gonna help us, because I think a bond is something we have to repay, we have bonds for, for things that we're repaying.
Correct.
So how is it that we...
What, what the idea would be, and to simplify, now whether it works out this way, I don't know, until we talk to actuaries and stuff, but the idea is if we're paying ninety-one thousand right now into MERS, or will be starting in eighteen. If we could get a bond and have a large sum of cash upfront to put into MERS to cover what they feel, based on their actuaries, would cover that, all the retirees, all our obligations in the future, we may be much further ahead, because when we put that in there today, we have the potential to earn eight, ten percent return on the investment, so that you not only got the money in there upfront, you've also got the potential for growth from the investment.
I see.
And then instead of paying the ninety-one thousand to MERS, which we know is gonna grow over time, hopefully, the bond payment won't be much more than that. I, I don't know how big a bond they would need, how, what MERS would need, but that's the idea.
Okay. Okay. I just, you, you, sorry.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
You just said the possibility of going from ninety thousand to well over a hundred thousand, and then, you know, every year going up by a big chunk. I'm not sure a bond is gonna, unless we borrow five million dollars and it's, the economy stays as healthy as it is, so that the payment we'd make on that, plus what we would pay to the retirees, is less than how much we're getting on return on investment, that seems tricky.
That's what we don't, I mean, we don't know how much, at this point, it takes a long time to get an actuarial run on the, on the fund, um, we, we, we'll have to get with MERS, generally, they do it once a year, and it takes them about five to six months to run them, but hopefully, for something like this, if we tell them that we've got this goal, this plan, hopefully, they can run something a little quicker, but I'm sure with other cities that have done this, and like so the counties looking at this, and I know offhand that some cities have done this type of thing, because some cities are way underfunded, I mean, some are forty, fifty percent or whatever. So hopefully, MERS is familiar enough with this, that they can just by looking at our numbers, give us a ballpark.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll see, I don't know what'll come out.
Thank you. So I guess to piggyback on Councilmember French's question, the, the hope is that, so let's say the, one of the code enforcement position turns, turns full-time, but that, let's say all, three of those positions would just come out of regular general fund, eventually?
Eventually, yes.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other, is there any further discussion? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So as far as the two part-time code enforcement positions, I know that they're temporary part-time, correct? With the hope that one turns into full-time, correct?
Yes.
So the, the other part-time will just go away. So we're looking at two temporary part-times that will hopefully result in one full-time position?
At least one.
At least, okay.
So we don't know what's going to happen with the number of initiatives, it's not impossible that there could be enough revenue generated to support two full-time, but I'm reluctant to put that out there, because we don't know until we cross that bridge. So in response to Councilmember French's concerns, which I agree with you, fund balance should be used conservatively and hopefully for one-time expenditures. So the Albion-Marshall Connector, just because of the timing, that's why it's there. The Planning Commission is somewhat similar, but that is a one-time expenditure. The code enforcement, hopefully, they'll be generating revenues to offset it in the future, so in theory, this is the startup cost for those two positions.
Right.
The salary increase, under normal circumstances, probably would have been included in the budget, but we hadn't had the Congress at the time, so also in the future, it would be spread among the departments and other commissions and agencies that those salaries are spread over, so in a sense, that is also a one-time use of general fund balance relative to that. I would offer, although I need it desperately, the city manager clerical, I would be willing to pull that off, and perhaps even after the first quarter of next year, we can have a reassessment, because hopefully, with the, the additional staff going online with the code enforcement, that may take some of the pressure off of the city manager's office. So I'm willing to wait to see how that actually rolls out and what the implications are for operations overall.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So with that potential part-time clerical for the city managers, would that be, would that need to be temporary as well, as part-time?
Now, that's a good question. I don't know if all office support are covered by the ACA Union, or, and I'd need to talk with them in regards to that.
Do you know?
Okay.
Office support?
Yeah.
Don't we have some in T P also?
Well, that's the same one.
Oh.
Yes.
I'll have to check, I guess.
Yeah, so I, I don't know the answer to that question yet, we have to have a discussion with them anyway, for a letter of agreement relative to the part-time, so that would be a part of the conversation.
Thank you.
If we can, you know, the, one request, and I guess to council in general, is to make a habit, if we can, like, actually include it, and not just general fund, the whole MML thing, because I think that's, that's helpful as a refresh, or something, I'd be willing to, if it's, you know, two thousand dollars, do that, but maybe put that, I guess, going forward in the, the council training budget line item, so. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So just from my own understanding, the fifteen hundred that was quoted by Attorney Smith, his name?
Yes.
I didn't want to say the wrong name.
Yeah, no.
That would be under this year's budget, correct? Because aren't we looking to do that like ASAP?
Yeah.
Potentially, if the date was settled on for this year.
Okay, so...
It would depend on the invoice and when we get paid.
Right.
So even if we got it in December, the invoice would go out.
Okay. Good point. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor.
Oh, yeah. So if manager and the finance director, I guess, just have that, the twenty-seventh, then we can...
Okay. So was there agreement, just to be clear, so we're all on the same page, so the Albion-Marshall Connector, the Planning Commission for the four thousand for the zoning match, and I didn't hear in regards to the deputy treasurer clerk?
No, we need it.
Yeah, I think that's...
Okay. The code enforcement, the two-part-time?
We'll hold off.
The two percent for the department heads and administrative staff are salaried.
Oh, so that's just for the departments?
Yes, right.
Department heads, okay.
Most of, all other employees have, already have, based in their, their job description, the step increases.
Okay.
They do not have such a process in place.
Okay.
You said the MML training for two thousand?
Yes, or, yeah.
Okay.
That's true.
There was nothing for Dalrymple at the present time. I didn't hear in regards to the Rieger Park Pond repair.
Just one second, I'm sorry. Councilmember Spicer?
Oh, well, she went down the list, and I just wanted to note what the decision was with regard to the city manager clerical. Did we decide to take a wait-and-see, or...
That's what I offered. If you wanted to insist that I hire somebody, I wouldn't fight you on it. But, but just in the effort to be reasonable and a little bit more conservative, I was suggesting that this could wait until the first quarter of two thousand and eighteen, and see if the hiring of the other additional staff has taken some of the load off of the city manager's office.
I just wanted to take accurate notes. Thank you.
All right. And I didn't hear any comments relative to the Rieger Park Pond repair, which was the seventeen thousand?
Is that, oh, Councilmember Spicer?
No, I, I don't know if that's, is that reasonable compared to the RFPs we received, or, I mean, it was actually one?
That was the quote that we...
That was the only one?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown? Oh, I'm sorry, did you...
I mean, I don't know what we would use to compare it to. I know it's, it's an important matter, and I'd like to see something done relative to the park, Rieger Park Pond, however, I just don't know about the clause, so...
Okay. Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. So in regard to Rieger Park, does that... So in regard to Rieger Park, does that have to come out of general fund? In there, could we look at potential other, potential funding to cover that 17,000?
That could be a trust thing.
Or some? I, I, I. So my question is, does that, is there an opportunity to look at other funding, available funding to cover that, that repair?
The only one, and I just overheard the mayor's speech, was the Albion Trust. That might be a possibility to ask for the funding there. Otherwise, I don't know that we have a dedicated fund that would cover it. I wouldn't call it a water fund project, but.
If, if, would you be willing to yield, Councilmember Lawler, your comment?
For a minute.
Okay. So I, I think, I, I understand what Councilmember Spicer's saying, because I know earlier on, I guess, in my tenure on council, that there was, they had just completed fixing that. And so I don't know how much actually use we got out of that. So, you know, I think that is something if we can, historically, that's, that park has, that park has been used for those purposes, for ice skating, those kinds of things. So I'm, that was my comment, which, that's her. Okay. Councilmember Lawler, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is, is, would the 17,000 be a long-term solution or?
This was the quote that we received. As we discovered with the wells, when you start digging a hole in the ground where there's water, sometimes you get surprised. So that's our best estimate at the present time. And in response to Councilmember Spicer, that was the quote that we did receive. Should there be a, as a go for an RFP, if we go that route, then if something comes in less, then there would obviously be additional resources left over. But right now, that's our best guess, educated guess relative to the cost.
Councilmember French?
Thank you. The Rieger Park renovation was the result of a $150,000 grant that we got in 2008 or '09. We, the city, provided some matching funds for that. Our staff did a bunch of the work as well as outside work. When they did that work, they discovered sadly that artesian wells were supplying the pond itself, which is why it never froze. And so that continues to be the issue. If we want to make a skating park, we have to find a way to plug those artesian wells. When they, when they cleaned the pond, they discovered two very large rectangular pieces of concrete sitting on top of those artesian wells. They pulled them up because they represented a tripping hazard for people who were swimming in the pond. So they took them out and uncovered the wells, and so that's where we are at this point. As you no doubt know, if you've driven down by the, the farmer's market, another artesian well has sprung between Thompson's Brake Service and the house on Erie Street in front of it. Just popped up in the middle of the ground and it flows toward Thompson's into a sewer drain. And so the concern that is, is that $17,000 with 20,000, whatever it is, will fix the problem that we have now, but we'll still need to weed it annually. We still have to worry about whether the sand is getting molded or, you know, algae infilled. And so it's a, it's sort of a long-term project to maintain this pond as a pond for swimming. I think we could spend less money by making it a ice skating pond and eliminate the responsibility of having it cleaned for swimming in the summer. The water temperature is really cold, and if you looked at the history of its use as a swimming hole, being in my precinct, I'd walk by it all the time. Not many people use it at all for swimming. In recent years, obviously, because it's not clean, it doesn't look very nice, but even in the year following the opening of, of that back in, what, 2010 or '11, maybe late as '12, kids even felt it was really cold, and so they weren't willing to go swimming in it. So I, I think that, you know, it's, it's worth investigating, in my opinion, that we should commit to, to trying to find a solution for Rieger Park. It may be that, that that solution in a cost-effective manner might make it easier, given the structure that we have in place and what we can spend. Might just simply be that we return it to the way it was, which was as a skating pond, and make every effort to make it a skating pond. And then in the summer, not so much. That's just my two cents.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I, really when I brought this up, I really, in my mind, I was thinking of a skating pond. I had not even ventured to think of it becoming a swimming hole of sort. And given the fact that it's just, it's such an eyesore, I mean, I, I think that we do need to do something. And you're right, let's explore, let's see what we can do with that too. Even if it just becomes a skating pond, I think that the citizens of this town would appreciate it, given the historic value that that park has been to this town. I mean, say Rieger Park and people immediately, it's Representative Albion, and I'd like to see us do something with it.
Mr. McCracklin?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that we, oh, yeah. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was just going to suggest that, and this is just for me, once I see how these things fit into the budget on Monday, I think maybe we can look and kind of weigh, if anything, what we want to kind of strike out or, or, or not. And even the, the part-time clerical position for the city manager's office, I, I would like to see that included. I'd also like to know if it, if it has to be temporary. Like I'm saying, include all of the things. That's just my suggestion, though. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Councilmember French?
Thank you. So if I'm hearing you right, Councilwoman Brown, you're suggesting that the part-time city ma, I think, part-time city manager clerical, part-time position be included in the budget? I think the concern, I mean, I, I think I agree with you in part. The concern is, is that the union probably requires that all positions that are more than one year have to be full-time.
But that's what?
Councilmember Brown?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I apologize. Thank you. That, that's what I'm asking Dr. Mitchell to get?
Right.
To get a solid answer on that. Because, yeah. And that'll help us kind of?
Right, right.
Decide.
Okay. You said all?
I think that was everything with, with the addition of the COPS grant match, which we'll have to get some clarification relative to when that commitment will need to be made.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So with the, the COPS grant, I think I remember that moves one of our present officers into that community policing position and opens up another police position. Okay, thank you.
And, and I'm glad you mentioned that you adopted resolution 2017-28 on June 19th when we did the application.
Is there any further discussion on additional budget considerations? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. I wanted to get some clarity on, I remember that vote. I remember at the time, the applicant, the grant application was asking for two positions, though. So we were only granted the one position. So the vote that we took in June was for two, it was?
Right. We were, we were, the application asked for two. We were approved for one.
Right.
Attorney Harkness?
Talking about the COPS grant?
Yes.
It's my understanding that because of the size of the city, we were actually limited to?
Oh, we were limited to one. So, yes, we had to apply for only one, I'm sorry. Okay. So my question is, for the resolution that was adopted, was that to approve one position or two positions? Because at the time, we were under the impression that we were likely to receive the two community policing positions.
Well, I think the resolution might have been for two, but since under the guidelines of the grant, we only qualified for one. The reality is you authorized whatever the grant was willing to give us.
Okay, and that's the way the resolution was written?
If I recall the resolution, I think it was for two, but then after, at the, after the resolution was approved and when we submitted the grant, my recollection is, we discovered that we don't qualify for one because of the size of the city. So we only applied for one because we were limited to one by the terms of the grant.
So, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. So.
The resolution indicates two positions.
Okay.
So at the time, we did the resolution, it was, we did ask for two as part of the process. And if I might, the resolution made the, made clear that the grant covers 75% of the cost of the position and the city's commitment would be 25. So whether it was one or two, it was clearly disclosed that 25% local match was going to be required for any position, but it is now one, not the two.
Councilwoman Brown?
Thank you. So, okay, I get that, and thank you. So my question is that we, we approved, because, okay, like I said, initially we thought two community policing positions are going to open up two positions on the police department, right? So in that resolution that we adopted, we were, and I know the match was 75-25, I remember that, but it was just one position based on the size of our community. So my, my baseline question is, we're approving only one new police position to fill that position that's bumped over to community policing?
Correct.
Yeah. You only, you, you had a, you had a, you approved a grant application with the idea that we were going to get, we're eligible to get two potential?
Right.
Grants for two officers. We're actually only eligible for one.
Right.
So you, the city's only, you know, on the hook for the one position?
Right.
One 25% match.
Right. So my question is with filling that, that voided position now? Does that make sense?
You talking about the one that we don't qualify for anymore?
No. I get the grant thing. Okay, so when we got approved for the grant, we have a current police officer that is going to do community policing, and that falls under the grant, and we have a 25% match. I get that. That frees up a police position on our department that we need to fill.
Right.
Going into this process, we thought we were going to have to fill two positions. We no longer have to do that because only one's going to be bumped over and paid for with the grant.
Right.
So we will only have one available position on our police department, correct? That we've already approved to fill.
Right.
Right. So my, what I'm trying to be clear on is that initially we had thought it was going to be two paid under this grant, that's not the case now. But we'd approved two new police positions under the department.
Can I, can I?
No.
Can I, can I jump in real quick?
Yes.
So I guess the question is, when we budgeted?
You're saying, what's it?
When we, when we budgeted, we, we basically budgeted no change of the police force?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought we did, though.
Okay. So, so basically what's happening is we, we kept the, the same number of sworn officers, and we, we have received this grant that we've learned, and so now we're going to take one person out of the department, not, excuse me, I spoke, basically out of their role to do the community policing role, and that's going to open up a slot that we can fill. So.
We're adding one police officer.
Yes.
Right.
Indirectly, yeah.
So if I might, if I understand your question a little more, more clearly, we did not present a budget that had two additional officers in it because we did not have the funding in place.
Okay. That does help me. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
And I was confused, so I probably confused everybody, but thank you. I got it.
You got it.
Seeing no further, well, complete that discussion item, we'll move on to the city manager report.
Hey, Mayor and Council, I, I gave you a packet of information today, including the update from MDOT in regards to the Superior Street M99 construction project. And as you are already aware, the, they are not going to be able to complete the Ricky this year and this season, so that will be completed in spring of next year. They are already committed to coordinating that so it doesn't coincide with school activities and graduations. But there will be, it will be open, however, they're anticipating in the first week of December, they'll essentially put asphalt or some powder surface in place, so at least that section of Superior will be open. There won't be any work for November 23rd, Thanksgiving Day. And I, I want to join Councilmember French in regards to being able to provide the workers with a piece of lunch today just to show our appreciation, because they've had some challenging experiences with this project. So we just wanted to say thank you to them as part of the Thanksgiving celebration and show our appreciation to them. Also, I want to remind you of the Albion Job Fairs and prep events. The prep events are November 28th, December 6th, and December 14th. And the actual fair itself will also be on December 14th, and I don't know if any of the Americor Vista team members are going to talk to that in public comment, but I did want to touch on that and remind everyone that those events are upcoming. The Albion Branch and AACP parent network is going to have a kickoff event, and that's going to be November 28th at Harrington Elementary School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And that, I think they're going to have a number of workshops, and this initial one will be on nutrition. I also shared with you, the Michigan Municipal League, they are rolling out a series of training seminars, so that information, and I believe some of you have signed up for the first one that's coming up in Lansing, so looking forward to that. And most important, I'm going on vacation as soon as I leave here to a warm climate, and I'll be back on Monday.
Thank you.
So a lot of you?
Are there any future agenda items? Councilmember French?
I was going to comment.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Can this council mandate that our city manager leave her cell phone behind in her office?
I'm pretty confident Louie's going to confiscate it, so it'll be.
Well deserved. Thank you.
Are there any future agenda items this evening? Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you. It, it may not be, if the city manager can remind me that it happened and where I can find it, but I had made a request for replacement signs on city streets in Albion. Did we ever get a list of all the ones that were replaced?
I honestly don't recall if you got a list, but.
I mean, well, then I'd like a list if we could get something like that for our information as to the number they did and where, if possible. Um.
After vacation.
After, it does. Oh, yeah. The other issue, my other concern is the healthcare grant, urgent care facility grant, is there any update, any info? You know, do we need to take a different direction or process or?
Okay.
That is a concern of mine. I'd like to continue to explore an urgent after hours care facility for.
Mayor, if I could respond briefly?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I believe Mr. Lindsay is going to be coming to do a presentation at a future meeting this year. I don't recall which one in December, and he will probably touch on that.
Um, Councilmember French?
I, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No.
No, I'm okay.
I wasn't sure if you heard anything, since you're...
Well, he was, um, recently board meeting.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I've been doing Zumba. Recreation Park has Zumba. They had Zumba this evening, so I was there. Don't need to state my name or anything. Alfreda Daisar Drake, ten sixteen South Superior Street. He recently mentioned that they, the grant that they did receive, everything started as of October first. They recently toured, toured a particular facility here in town to see what that would look like for an urgent care kind of space, but that may not work out, so they're still kind of talking about that to see what that could look like, and if there's a lot more discussion, it has to take place. So they haven't decided on anything in particular, but they know that the money's used for, you know, some type of care facility, you know, facility, so they're still discussing that.
Thank you. Councilmember Spicer.
Was that, can I, was that the rural health care grant that we applied for, or is this something totally different?
Something totally different.
Something different.
Councilmember French, and then Attorney Harkness.
So I had, had explored, talking with Harry Tompkins about what the status was of the rural health care grant that, that was submitted. And, and as of a month ago, we were told that, that no action on any rural health care grants in this country had taken action, that President Trump had not appointed leadership in that area, and so they didn't have any grant reviewers. And so basically, it's sort of not dead in the water, but sort of waiting for infrastructure at the federal level to, to be put into place so that, that, that grant review can happen. I think from conversations with Richard Lindsey and folks at Oaklawn, they're moving forward as if that grant's not coming. And if it does, great, but, but they're moving forward like it's not coming.
So...
At least not coming this year.
So what, 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 just, just for order and timewise, we're in future agenda items?
That was mine, future agenda.
So, yes, we'll...
I don't know what all this is.
Oh, yeah, we're talking about... Yeah, we'll, we'll, uh...
Sent that over to managers, so you guys will have that for the next meeting. And all the talk about health care, the manager's probably got it in the back of her head, but it just reminded me, we need to do our annual health insurance update.
Okay.
Oh, right.
Okay. I, I will add two future agenda items that Chief Kip brought to my attention, so, well, one of them is, I guess, a discussion kind of council safety. I know that's something that council, Councilmember Reed has multiple times brought, and also Councilmember Lawler. And then also...
What is, what is it?
It's kind of like how we handle protocol here for security, those kinds of things. And then what I'd, I'd like to do, and this might, maybe both can happen in a work, if we, if we have a, potentially, we could do a work session or study session before the next meeting, if we start at like six or six-thirty, maybe.
On the twenty-seventh?
On the...
Fourth.
The fourth.
Oh, on the fourth?
Yes. Um, the, just get a wrap, our minds wrapped about, around the email thing, because then there's a lot of discussion on that in the community. And so if we want to do that, just to see what we have available, so we know if we need assistance to enable that on our mobile phones, those kinds of things. Councilmember French.
So you're talking six-thirty, just for a half an hour kind of meeting, or six o'clock for an hour kind of meeting? Or six-thirty, and we take an hour, and this meeting starts at seven-thirty?
Well, it's, it's really, I'll be safe, and I'll say six.
Okay.
If that, if that's convenient for everyone, or just a quick...
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that's all I have. Are there, are there any other future agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move forward to motion to excuse Councilmembers Reed and Barnes, who did indicate they would be, not be present this evening. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Speaking.
Moved in second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose. Okay. Public comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum. Are there any, is there any public comment this evening? And if there, if you do have a comment, please state your name and address.
That's okay. I just had a quick announcement. Good evening. Just wanted to remind folks about the downtown open house and Albion Glow Parade taking place on Friday, December first. There's an exciting downtown open house where businesses are open extended hours from five to nine, special Christmas tree lighting at six P.M., and the parade starts at seven-thirty P.M. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Arnold, nine oh six Hall Street. For all those that's interested, on my way to the council, I was looking at the evening news, and so I found out that, I guess, they got like a hundred thousand more signatures than they need to get the marijuana bill on the ballot, so it looks like they're just going to get that, get that going. And so with that said, I probably would encourage, if we got any entrepreneurs out there that's looking to open up a dispensary, you probably would have to come in to the city and submit the information, and, and I guess we'll have a public vote on that, I guess. And I guess with a public vote, maybe we'll be able to, maybe get some understanding on individuals' position, because like I say, I don't know Ms. Spicer's position on marijuana. I understand she voted against it, but I'd never get her position. And so I, I know Mr. French's position is, he's been around a long time. We, we'll let you stand, Pat. And so, how many more minutes I got?
Oh, no, I was just, I was saying, direct. Oh, no, I wasn't, no, no, you have plenty of time.
And then, so I did attend the forum, Lindsey, with Ms. Lawler. And so, so I asked her the question, well, what made her retreat? So she told me, excuse me, she told me that she thought about it long and hard, and at the eleventh hour, she spoke to Chief Kip, and she decided it'd be too dangerous, or it was a concern about break-ins. But if I recall, I didn't remember him discussing any of that at the library. So, so that being said, I hope with that been on the ballot, we probably can take a, a different position, because this, in my opinion, when we come up with some, some hard social issues, we really going to have a problem. You know what I'm saying? Because, you know, I just don't know. I don't see how, how we going to be able to meet on the same accord, because I'm sure this is just the first social issue we're going to deal with, is the marijuana thing. I think we should get, I think we should get out in front of that, because it's going to be a loss, so we might as well get out in front of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other, any further public comment this evening?
Emily McCallan, one oh one North Marion Street. I'm one of the AmeriCorps Vistas, working at Star Commonwealth in Harrington Elementary. On a good note, you may have seen the charitable union flyer that went out on Friday for the exit issues. Harrington and charitable union partnered up on Monday, November thirteenth, to do a co-giveaway. We served over two hundred and fifty individuals, and we have fifty-two volunteers, so it was a great community event. And then also Friday, November seventeenth, the weekend food program started at Harrington Elementary, which is sponsored by the Freeway Church and Albion Innovation. They are funding our program, which we provide after-school packs to students on every Friday that school's in session, and we served eighty-one children. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment this evening? Okay. Seeing none, Councilmember Spicer, Councilmember Brown.
Mayor, if I may, please just make a clarification as to how I voted with regard to the medical marijuana facilities. I just want to be clear, and there be no misunderstanding, that I voted for four of the five medical marijuana facilities. I didn't, I voted against the dispensaries in Albion, just to be clear.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, yes.
Cajun turkey.
Are you fucking eating ham?
Oh, I found the hole in my purse.
Oh, you found it?
Is there a hundred dollar bill?
I wish.
Did you say, did you just say chili?
We're hosting this year.
He's looking like...